PowerPoint, I can do it for you if you want.
Alrighty, good morning Commissioners and over to Chair Harrington.
Well, good morning, everyone, and here we are. Can you believe it, the middle of the month of January already. Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we have an incredible list of topics today. Nine in total, so we've got a very full day. So here we go. Lucky for us, because of staff, we've got great materials and a whole bunch of these are gonna let us ease up into our day. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mira, for our first one on the Public Health Advisory Council.
Well, thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Board. For the record, my name is Mira Samantha. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. With me today is Alex Coleman. She is our Quality Systems and Performance Management Coordinator with Public Health and supports our Public Health Advisory Council. Marie Bowman Davis unfortunately isn't able to be here today, but that's okay. We have the subject matter expert with us, so I will turn it over to Alex to go through the Public Health Advisory Council applicants for your consideration.
So today, we are gonna just provide a quick overview of the Public Health Advisory Council, review our 2024 recruitment and our recommendation. So the Public Health Advisory Council has been appointed by the Washington County Board of Commissioners to fulfill any federal and state mandated responsibilities and to advise the Board in its role as the local public health authority for Washington County. The FAC also makes recommendations to the Public Health Division Manager around how to improve the health and well-being for everyone in Washington. The Board is comprised of a minimum of fifteen and a maximum of seventeen members that advise the Division. It seeks to represent the whole community, and members from communities that experience health and social inequities are generally given preference for membership on the council. We currently have four vacancies and three upcoming vacancies from members with expiring terms who are not seeking reappointment from September twenty-sixth to October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. The FAC reviewed three applications that had actually been submitted prior to the open recruitment period. And those three applicants are being recommended today. So we are asking the Board to kind of give us direction for appointment at the January twenty-eighth Board Meeting for Brian O'Connor, Juan Pablo Villalobos Garcia, and Christine Legler for regular terms beginning February first, twenty twenty-five, going through to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
That is our presentation for you this morning, but we are happy to entertain any questions about these recommendations.
Commissioners, I know I don't have any questions. Great mix of experience, continuing to expand the Advisory Council.
It's a big group.
Yeah.
You good with this? You're the board person on there?
Well, we're going to be revisiting that, the Board assignments on our different councils, so we don't need to make a change now. But we need to look at, you know, first and foremost, the ones we just went through and will check on today. Topic five are our primaries, and we're gonna, in the future, revisit Board involvement on other ones that have just crept in over the time. What we really need to make sure is that we satisfy the ORS ones versus why things were added ad hoc.
I was impressed by the quality of the applicants. That was very heartening.
So we're all set?
You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Free to step back in. I will stay up here and welcome Rebecca Miller. Rebecca Miller is our Supervisor for our Disability, Aging, and Veteran Services Division within within Health and Human Services. Stand by for the correct presentation on the PowerPoint. While we're loading that up, just in case we have public tuning in, again, for the record, my name is Mira Samantha with Washington County Health and Human Services, and I'm the Director, and I will turn it over to Rebecca for this presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington, and nice to meet you, Commissioner Snyder. My name's Rebecca Miller. I'm the Supervisor for Disability, Aging, and Veteran Services, and I also serve in the role as the Area Agency on Aging Director. So today, we are going to be sharing with you some information about applicants that you'll come for your decision on January twenty-eighth. This is for appointment to the Aging and Veteran Services Advisory Council for a three-year term that ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. So the Washington County Aging and Veteran Services Advisory Council, also called AVSAC, consists of thirteen regular members and up to six alternates, for a total of nineteen potential positions. The positions on the council are specified in our bylaws as written, and then, really most importantly, they're majority older adult and then also members of the public who receive services from DAVs. We also strive for representation on our Board by individuals who are committed to racial equity, who are racial and ethnic minorities themselves, who identify themselves as LGBTQ people, veterans, people eighteen-plus who live with a physical disability, and then consumers, again, who are of our services. So in accordance with the Older Americans Act, which gives the authority and requirement that we have in Advisory Council, it's, the laws basically state that it shall include individuals and representatives of community organizations as well, who will help to enhance the leadership role of the Area Agency on Aging in developing our community-based system of services. We have a, should have a diverse council that is reflective of the community and the people we support. And the council advocates for system-level changes, provides advice to us regarding policies and programs, and really connects to the broader community to understand the issues and priorities. So a little bit about, I already stated how large we are or what the council looks like. We did receive six applications. Just one quick update to the slide is we actually have two that are, have withdrawn, one who can't commit to the meetings and one who found another committee. So one has not yet attended a meeting, which is one of our requirements before we put them forward, so that they make sure they're, they want to continue to attend in the future before we come before you for an appointment. The, of those recommended, those three we're recommending, all are sixty-plus, two of them are veterans, and one does volunteer work and some paid work as a supportive services provider. So, and a little bit more, Ian Barrett, Matthew King, and Michael Peralta. You have their information in the packet. I'll just say that Mr. Barrett is, came to US to work as an engineer and became a US citizen in two thousand thirteen, hoping to be of service to the community. He's retired and in the past has been part of a local political, like a Democratic, Washington County Democrats, giving input to their committee. He's widely traveled and looks forward to working with people who have different experiences from him. Mr. King was in the US Army Reserves for just over twenty years and is currently working part-time and volunteering part-time with the Washington County's DA Office in the Veterans Treatment Court, of which we are a part. And, yes.
Yes, sorry, Rebecca. Just to add a little clarification, I understand there was a question about whether or not a Washington County employee could serve on an Advisory Council. Our understanding is that there are no rules against it, provided that they're doing it on their own time. They're not representing Washington County or the role that they serve, and they're meeting the other requirements of the committee that they're serving on. So I'm happy to entertain questions when Rebecca's done, but this individual meets those requirements. This would not be done during paid.
Thank you. And then Mr. Peralta is a US Army Lieutenant Colonel, was retired, and a Vietnam veteran. So he has a master's degree in psychological counseling and consults on leadership and management around the world. So he's currently involved at the American Legion Post Number Two in Forest Grove and is currently the President of Hope Community Network, which focuses on homeless issues and volunteerism in the homeless community. So if the applicants before you are appointed will have six regular positions and five alternate positions available.
Thank you, Rebecca. Happy to entertain questions.
I'll just say, I appreciate finally getting the answer to my question. And I'm noting that it's answered that is inconsistent with what I've been told previously, but I will reset to this current answer.
Thank you, Chair.
Any questions? Everybody all set? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, onward to the next one, Homeless Solutions Advisory Council. Welcome, Nicole.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Good to be with you this morning. We have a slide deck that will be pulled up momentarily. While that's pulled up, just want to apologize, Assistant Director Larson had planned to be here. Her schedule's a little bit packed today. She's able to make it. So I hope we suffice. I'm joined today.
We have one in the packet? Sorry, we're doing the technical end here. Imagine that Jess has anything else to do.
I know.
Well, maybe I'll have the Chair of our Solutions Council introduce herself while we wait for those slides to get pulled up.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kim Marshall, the Executive Director of Project Homeless Connect and the Chair of our Solutions Council. It's good to be with you this morning.
Chair, would you like me to get started with an introduction of the Solutions Council while those slides are pulled up?
Great.
So for those of you that have been on the Commission, rather everyone but Commissioner Snyder, you'll remember that we launched our Solutions Council just under a year ago, actually. The first meeting was not quite a year ago. This was a work to bring together our advisory bodies from the Continuum of Care to the SHS Advisory Body. So the COC Board, Continuum of Care Board, became merged with the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee and became the Homeless Solutions Advisory Council. That body has been meeting for a year, helping us wrestle through, as you are well aware, some pretty severe changes to the supportive housing services funding landscape, and has also been providing advice and guidance to us as we submit our COC application every year, or rather, maybe every other year with some of the changes coming from HUD, and provides general advice and guidance to our work as the conveners of the homeless, of the the homeless services system here in Washington County. I'm gonna pull up the slides on my screen just so I have a recollection of what I'm talking about. Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, perfect timing. We've got it up. We'll go ahead and advance to the next slide. One other piece I'll pull out from this slide, or I'll pull out, rather, is the Solutions Council has subcommittees. There are two standing subcommittees that meet regularly at this time, the first one being the Performance Evaluation Technical Subcommittee. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. The Performance Evaluation Technical Subcommittee, as well as the Lived Experience Advisory Committee, and those report up through the formal body of the Solutions Council. The Solutions Council is also charged with helping us to do system integration work, so that includes primarily our behavioral health system, but also law enforcement, public safety, and when we get to our recommended members, you'll see why that's so exciting and important. Before we talk about the recommended members, the Solutions Council, by our bylaws, has ten to fifteen members. We currently have ten seated members. Marshall, as we mentioned, is the Chair. We have about a little under half our service providers. We have folks that do work in the senior services space, the mental health care space, the school districts, really helping to bring that system lens and system integration lens to our work. And for our process, our bylaws require that the Solutions Council recommends new members to you. So to support that, we've had an open call for applications. Our membership helped us recruit folks that they know that have great expertise. We're really excited that we received twenty-one applications for what is essentially five seats. Hello, Jess, good to see you. And we interviewed nine, or nine folks and are recommending four members. I want to give a huge shout out to Nadia Mohammed in the back there, who led that process. Today is also her birthday, so if you could help me shout out that word. And, and as well, the interview process was co-created and co-led by staff and Solutions Council Executive Committee members. And I will turn things over to Kim Marshall to talk about the membership that, the recommendations that the Solutions Council has unanimously voted to bring forward to you.
We have four recommendations for you, and we're really excited about this. The Solutions Council already is a really thought thought thinkers, committed to the important issues, and willing to have the hard conversations. It's been an extraordinary year, led by staff with Nicole and Jess and Meredith and Nadia, and just want to thank them so much for all of their hard work, because it does take a lot. The four that we're bringing to you today, Adam Peterson with HealthShare, tons of experience in the behavioral health world, which we all know is so key for this work we do, Danielle Dawson, who's the Executive Director of Good Neighbor Center, Kim Hahn from Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. We're really excited about this because we need that aspect, emergency response thinkers in the room as well. And then Rachel Duke, who many of you know from Community Partners for affordable housing, the Executive Director there.
And with that, Chair, we're happy to answer any questions, and we look forward to these folks being before you on January twenty.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a quick question, Chair Harrington, if you don't mind.
Please.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask this question, and I can't recall the report, name of the report, but it was a report we just recently saw comparing, I think, the results of the supportive housing services and this committee in terms of the lived experience and the ratio of people. We were, our numbers were pretty low compared to the other counties. And how do, how do you plan to bring up the lived experience percentage of, and how does this? Because I couldn't recall.
Asking about the council.
Percentage of the committees. Yeah, let me just say it differently now. You know the report I'm talking about? It was a report that talked about the results of the supportive housing services, and it was comparing progress and accomplishments of each county, and one of the things that, one of the table of that accomplishment was committees that different counties have, and the percentage of delivered experiences versus the percentage of the people of color. And I remember seeing our numbers being lower than the other counties, but I know our own story, which is we just started, and I think you started that with that story. So it's not because we have not been recruiting, we have not been intentional. We have been. It's just that it's a smaller and something that we started recently. But then we have a recruitment opportunity, so how does this bring up these four number, four people? Bring up those percentage, or which percentage side will they add on to?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Commissioner Phi. Of the four folks here, only one has identified as having lived experience. I use the word identified. It's really important to be cognizant, but not everyone's willing to share that lived experience when they first kind of engage in a new body of work. One thing I might offer is the Lived Experience Advisory Committee is kind of that specialized place where we're getting folks with more direct lived experience. So what I think you're referring to is looking just at the parent bodies and not at that separate, that separate subcommittee. That subcommittee meets quarterly. It doesn't meet as frequently as the lived experience, or excuse me, as the Solutions Council, but we do provide compensation for the Lived Experience Advisory Council, so it meets in alignment with our budget of what we can afford to to ensure we're paying folks for their time and stories.
And I'd like to build on that. One thing that I've observed in terms of the SHS Oversight Committee, frequently, there are people with lived experience that want to contribute, but these, the parent committees and the level of policy work and what they're grappling with can often be quite intimidating. So this is where I think our county approach with having the Advisory Council, which with this roster, does ensure we have lived experience on the part-parent level, but having that more focused, lived experience subcommittee. I think the experience that I've seen over three or four years, just in this whole space, says this is a more comfortable, more welcoming best practice. So just wanted to contribute that.
Yeah, that's a really good background.
Any other board questions or comments? I'll go last then. A couple of things. I, before this comes in the Board Meeting for the support materials, I really appreciate the work, not only the work being done by the Advisory Council, but how you set up the Advisory Council and this very, these various committees. I'm going to insist, or I'm gonna draw it myself using PowerPoint. The number, there's the parent committee and then the subcommittees. And we have to use that graphic in every single SHS presentation. Okay, because external to my remembering, we are not getting any credit for the incredible structure that you have put in, excuse me. And that's where seldom do I say, please do it this way, but we need that graphic. You have would have sworn. So much for swearing, Catherine. Nope, this presentation, but I've seen it in another one recently. You listed out the subcommittees, and I was like, great. So we just gotta have it every single time for a while. So now, for the website. I want to report that James Bain, who on the second slide is listed as Citizen at Large, he also serves on the SHS Oversight Committee. Just, we've got great Washington County reps on SHS Oversight, but he was new as of the beginning of last year, twenty twenty-four, and he has been present and contributing every step of the way. So, great choice. Zoe Papiano, oh, thank you, I got it right for a change. She's a beautiful name. From Community Action, I see her on TCPB as well. She's always present, always contributing. So the folks that have been serving on these two committees at Metro are very well-intentioned, have been putting in extraordinary amounts of time to learn more. And it shows, I believe, to all of us as well, the work that the Homeless Solutions Advisory Council puts in to develop our, not only our programs, but the annual work plans, and really try to help us figure out, how can we advance with regionalism here in the Portland metropolitan area, because it flat out isn't being done anywhere else. Side note, yes, I do get a little tired of being in Metro Committee Meetings where the examples that are brought up are LA County, City of Houston, another city, and it's like, they're not a region. They're not a region. Show me a region, and HUD has told us, there is no other region trying to do what you're doing. Maybe I need to call up our HUD Regional Rep and ask him to give us a quote on that, so we can remind Metro that here, it's not just Catherine saying this, but HUD knows we're on the leading edge, anyway. Thank you. So Commissioners, we're all ready for our meeting next week?
Good job.
Thank you. I'd like to just add one other point, and that is that you have, you had great, you've got twenty-one applicants. We ended up with four that are really good, and I think that speaks to your point, Chair, that we are, people want to be engaged with a successful proactive group that's pushing the ball forward. And when I look at that list of four people, I know very well two of them, and they're, they're strong thought leaders. And so I think that speaks to the work that you've done in developing the parent and the subcommittee. So it just dawned on me that, that's, I think that that's a big signifier. Thank you. Job well done, staff. And guess what? Because of your great work in recruitment and setting a roster forward, we are twenty minutes ahead of schedule. Who would have thought? So Ms. Angie, what time would you like us to shoot for, for the next topic? In ten minutes? Or right now?
We're ready if you are.
Hallelujah. Great. Results from round one voter survey for the Public Safety Levy.
Sometimes I have to look behind me and remind myself who's behind me. Sneak in. Thought we might be a little ahead of schedule, so we tried to plan for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Houston was useless.
Well, I will say, I was feeling, if I could just pause for a second. I was driving in this morning and feeling just as excited as I was last Tuesday when we had the swearing-in ceremony. And I was like, you know, we have some big problems. What's the deal, Catherine? Did you just have a really good cup of coffee this morning? And, and I thought about it, right? I hold myself accountable all the time, right? Good cup, bad cup, or whatever, each on my shoulders. And I thought, no, what excites me about doing this work and coming to work each and every day is that we have a great staff and a culture where we do our work together. We problem solve together, solutions, and our employees deliver service, excellent service to our community each and every day. And so while we go through difficult problem-solving throughout, we, we will, right? We've got challenges like we do every year, but we've done such a great job in doing that work each of the last several years together, that I'm excited about ensuring that we continue to have a great twenty twenty-five. And now here we have another one of our big topics for twenty twenty-five, the Public Safety Levy.
Great, thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. That was such a great segue, because you can see the big team. There's a long list of staff going on here, and so it's a perfect sort of illustration of what you were just describing. So for the record, I'm Erin Calvert, one of the Assistant County Administrators. I'm here today with Marnie Kyle, another Assistant County Administrator, Philip Brandsford, our Communications Officer, Lisa Tattersall is available on Zoom today. And then our partners at EMC Research are also on Zoom, Ian Stewart, whose name I inadvertently spelled wrong on one of the cover sheets, so apologies. Siana Ziegler and Mandy Bogry are partners who will be providing the results from round one voter surveys for the Public Safety Levy. We're also gonna be providing just a really quick overview on the development of the Library and Public Safety Levy levies, and then we'll turn it over to EMC Research to spend the majority of our time on the polling results. In light of the information today, the question for your Board is really just whether you have any questions or further direction for staff in any of the levy proposal development. This slide should be familiar to you all. It guides us through the general approach to our levy development plan. And since we were last before you, we've expanded the red circle just a bit to include survey findings, transmittal, and briefings for Boards and Departments. But as you know, we continue to kind of work through all the elements of that red circle as we go back and forth between our levy staff committees, our steering committees, and then coming back to the Board for direction. So it's a real, again, another partnership with everyone in our finance office and trying to kind of get through all the details we need to develop a good proposal.
Okay, Chair Harrington and Board, Marnie Kyle, one of the Assistant County Administrators. And I'm just gonna provide a quick update on the Library Levy planning. So the Steering Committee met Jan- January eighth, and we discussed some polling developments. We provided an update on the funding and governance process, which is really, as a reminder, it's designed to make recommendations for your Board about base service levels and a recommended levy rate. So we also have the, we have a Library Levy Steering Committee coming up again on January twenty-second. So that's kind of coming up quickly. Library Levy polling will begin the week of January twenty-seventh. We did make a determination to bump that up a week, just because there's a lot going on the week before, and it won't put us behind in our, in our schedule and getting the information we need so that your Board can make a final recommendation around.
And I think that the point of moving it was to ensure that we had a, a good, a better response level. So that's, that was, I just want to point that out, that it was about the response level.
Yes, thank you. And then, so we also, with the support of the Steering Committee, we are working with EMC Research to test two different library levy rates by splitting the sample and getting a larger sample size so that we don't, we don't have any reduction in the confidence of the levy results. So what we're looking at doing is polling at 10 cents as well as 15 cents. And the reason we're looking at 15 cents is because that, that, the 10 cent is based on predictions that, and based on the predictions that basically we know we're going to likely have a reduction this year to the County General Fund. And then looking at growth and continued, you know, in, in future years. And it didn't really take into any account, any volatility in like inflation or costs. And so we just want to look at the higher rate to see how it polls and see if, if it's something your board would want to consider when we move to the measure.
Good, information is good.
Yeah. And then as a reminder, we'll be back on January 28th to have more conversation with your board about the recommendations around base services, to dig a little deeper into that and to dig into the library levy rates.
I'd just like to make a comment about the discussions around the, the library level. They are really robust discussions and we always go over the time because we have interesting things to talk about. Thank you for your support, Chair, about looking at 10 and 15. You know, that's, that's an important piece so that we can, we, we know what the comfort level is in our community.
Thank you. And I was going to say this later, but while we were going over the library timeframe, I needed to remind myself of the time period that the levy will apply. From July 2026 through the end of June 2031.
Correct.
That's why it's so important to look into those forward years to be well positioned for our community. Because we know the library system in Washington County is a tremendous asset.
Yep, exactly. Thank you. And we have fabulous Steering Committee members and like Commissioner Tree said, we have really robust conversations, which is really helping Lisa and I as we work with the library directors and city managers. So thank you for being with us.
If I could put a finer point on that. Because of the quality of the liaisons and the way you dig in with the full team, I don't feel a need to myself dig into the detailed complexity of the structure. So I just, I really appreciate the due diligence that you put in.
Great, thank you. So for the Public Safety Levy planning, what's ahead, as you can see, is really just a note of today. We're here at Work Session doing the Survey One results. In January, end of January, and then end of February, we have another Public Safety Steering Committee meeting. So again, Commissioner Schneider will be walking, welcoming you to that and making sure all of our calendars are straightened out and the schedules are out. And then we just have, like I said earlier, the Public Safety Levy Staff Meeting. So this is just nothing scheduled. We're kind of pulling them in as the Steering Committee asks questions and wants to look at other investment scenarios. And I'm just refining the information so that we can develop the best proposal. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ian Stewart from EMC Research and his team. And Ian, if you just want to queue us next slide, we'll go ahead and take care of that for you.
Sounds good. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ian Stewart, Senior Principal with EMC Research.
Oops, we can't hear you, Ian, sorry. I had to use those little double dots.
Sienna can hear me.
Okay, we can hear you, thank you.
I don't know that I did it any differently, but.
No, I think we might have had to do something on our end. Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Ian Stewart, Senior Principal, EMC Research. You can see Sienna there. Now I can see her as well. And we'll be spending the next 20, 30 minutes or so going over a presentation of the results. I'm happy to stop as you have questions. The, the team there has indicated to me they will stop me if you see anything. And so briefly, EMC is a public opinion research company. We've been in business since 1989. Sienna and I are located here in Puget Sound, but we've got staff all over the West Coast, including in the greater Portland area. And we have a long history of doing research like this. We could talk about that as well if you're interested. But we're bringing all that to bear today on our view of the Public Safety Levy. So first, let me tell you what we did. This is a representative countywide survey of likely voters for November 2025. So in brief, we look at the voter universe and we take a look at what's happened in the past and do our best to predict what we think November 2025 will look like. Being a little bit more lenient on who we let into this survey. So what you're going to find here is you're not going to find people who basically write, show up only once every four years. You will not find those voters in this. So just remember, keep that universe in mind. This survey was conducted the 4th through the 11th of December, so late last year, but just before most of the holiday started to kick off. We use a mixed mode approach. This is pretty standard of the industry right now. It's a combination of telephone, email, and text to web. So yes, we are in fact doing landlines, though mostly it's done via cell phones now. We're also doing invitations via email and text messages. So those folks actually see it on the web as opposed to hearing it over a phone. But it's the same information delivered, just slightly different approach to both of them. We did a total of 400 interviews. That works out to a margin of error plus or minus 4.9 percentage points. We could talk about that more if you want. But essentially what you need to know is, anything you're looking at is, is accurate within that plus or minus 4.9 percentage points. The closer to 50/50 the answer is, so if we say there's like 50 yes, 50, 50% no, that margin of error fully comes into play. The further apart these are, so closer these are to 80/20, margin of actually, margin of error actually drops a little bit. We have more confidence in those results, but that's a little too complex. You could just use 4.9% percentage points, any of the numbers we're showing you, to take that away from, from what the margin of actual error actually looks like. So briefly, you're familiar with this map, but we do actually have this as a geography. I will pause here as soon as I finish this slide as a, as a comment to make. But you, you're familiar with this. We're showing this as a geography. Because we have the voter universe here, we can actually do any kind of geography you're interested in. But know that in a sample of 400, really we're looking at, you know, four is probably the maximum geographic units we could use. You could do it north-south, you could do east-west, you could do urban, suburban, as long as it provides enough margin of error for us to be confident in those results. There's a comment here. No, I, I had an indication there was a comment, but I will keep going if there isn't. Okay, so moving on. Go on to the next slide if you're, if you can hear me. Now I can't hear you. So if you're, if you're speaking, I, I can't hear it. I can't hear anything, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we've lost the room audio. I can hear very faintly, but it sounds like someone might have been speaking in there.
Okay, I heard, I heard something's happening on our end. So we will, we will wait until we get an indication of. I don't see a chat in the room. And if we need to go old school, I could be, I suppose I could be texting your question. Continue. Go ahead. I think you're saying, I think you're indicating to me to go ahead. Yes, okay. You're very tiny in my screen, but I will, I will keep going. And then we can fix the audio, we'll come back to those questions. Or you can text them to me if, if that's, if that's preference. So one of the first questions we ask in a survey like this, you can look in the lower left-hand corner to see the question text that we asked. This is a right direction, wrong track question. It takes a lot of stuff into account, economic confidence, how am I feeling about things are going in the area? We've asked it the same way for the last 30-plus years so that have things gotten pretty seriously off on the wrong track? Is intentional language? It might be a little different than some of the other ones that you might see. And actually, we think it actually makes it a little harder to, to answer off on the wrong track. You have to really be convinced of that in order to say that. So what you might see here is a better number that you're going to see in other, other surveys. But remember, these are all connected to geography. So if we asked us about the state of Oregon, we asked us about the nation, you're going to see a very different number than you will in Washington County. It's positive for us to know that things are, are looking this strong for people in their perceptions of how things are going in Washington County. Generally, although not always, positive numbers like this tend to be correlated with more support for taxes. That's not always the case, but generally when people are feeling pretty good about things, that tends to mean they support taxes at a stronger level. Assuming you can keep, you can hear me, let's keep going. I'm not seeing the slide advance, but. And remember that we can't really hear you either, so. Slow clicker, okay. That's fine. All right. Looks like we can go now. All right. So the next question this, in this survey is an open-ended. It's what we call the most important problem question. And what we do here is we actually literally ask, what do you think is the most important problem facing your neighborhood today? And then they tell us what they think. We put these into categories. So if you were interested, you could see people answering this question as a sentence, a paragraph, one word. We put those back into categories. In these kinds of questions, we tend to say that around 10% indicates a significant response. So the first thing you'll notice, if you just look at where the graph is, there are three items that are above 10% on this. But there's no one item that dominates. So if you were to take and look at this same question, say in the city of Portland right now, you would see homelessness, crime and drugs kind of off the charts. They'd be in a 30, 40% range, right? So double or triple, and it would really stand out among these answers. What you're seeing here is sort of a group of answers that all have some kind of significant response with affordable housing, public safety, and homelessness being the top three. But they're not leagues above the other ones, right? You could in fact put these together in a few different ways and, and, and look at them together. You might say that public safety, crime and drugs go together with homelessness. Maybe you don't. If you want to say it that way, we could be in the 30s with those two together. But what we're looking, like we're looking for right here is, is there anyone that dominates here? And the answer is not really, right? They're all, there's a series of issues that people are worried about. And if we're looking at public safety, crime and drugs, and then we're looking at some of the other items that are connecting to that. So maybe careless drivers and speeding comes in as well. You can put those two together and say there's some public safety issues as, as well. And then the last category is that other category, you might be wondering, those are things that are less than 1% that don't deserve their own category. And I'll get collected there. You're going to see some, you know, people complaining about something their neighbor's doing, something random that doesn't quite fit into a, a full category. Let's move on to the next slide. So we're now moving into public safety perceptions. We asked a similar open-ended question, but this time more detailed. What public safety issue in your neighborhood are you most concerned about? The suggestion here was, all right, if we don't catch it in the, in the most important problem as the biggest open end, what if we make sure this is more focused on in this next question? Do we see any differences? The reality is, no, we don't. Homelessness, property, crime and theft. Property, crime and theft is probably the one that changes from the other one, but the homeless, homeless position at 14% is almost where it was in the first slide, right? So we can say here that the, the sorting of these varies a little bit. Speeding and unsafe driving does come on on top. Remember I said 10% in an open end is, is something we consider significant? So a slight difference in terms of the stacking here, but no big changes in terms of, is there a different public safety issue that people are worried about locally? Once again, you could combine some of these together. So you can see that crime general, that's not really one that we can be specific on, right? People are just saying, I'm worried about crime. They didn't give us one of these that is connected to property crime or drugs, right? They give us a more generic answer. So you could in fact combine that with property crime and maybe get us into the 20s. But when you're looking at this, you really again are looking for, all right, is there a dominant answer here that is standing out? And really, there isn't one. Homelessness does come in at the top, but at 14%, that's not what Portland 30 or 40% would be for homelessness. So there is one that stands out here in Washington County as above the rest. Okay. I don't think the audio has been fixed yet because I haven't heard anyone pipe in and ask me a question, but we will keep going. This next slide, all of these questions are on the same scale. And when you see scales like this, you will find that we're, we're doing these questions on the same set of answers. And then we randomize these questions. So no one of these appears in the same order for any person. Okay? So that, the idea behind this is to ensure that we don't introduce bias into the survey by having a question always appear in the same order of respondents. What we can do then is to put these on the same graph and then look at how they differ. So we asked about safety ratings. The scale here is very safe to very unsafe. The two safe questions are in the blue, right? So the very safe is the dark blue, the mostly safe is the light blue, and then the somewhat safe, sort of that pinkish color, and the very unsafe, the red. And so just visually, if you look briefly, you can see there's two places where the intensity is the strongest. The safety in the neighborhood and the safety in what we use as sort of our test case here, downtown Portland. Very different numbers there, right? So we added that to give you a sense of how are people feeling in their own communities versus a, a example that we use for them. People feeling the most safe in their own neighborhood, the two combined together, if you take very and mostly safe, we're into virtually everyone, right? We're into the 80s percent of people saying they feel very or somewhat, or mostly safe in their own neighborhood. A very small proportion saying somewhat unsafe and almost no one saying very unsafe, about 1% there. If you look to the right, you can see us combining them together. So the total safe gets us about almost 90%. Total unsafe, 13%. So it's not as if everyone is saying they're completely safe, but the preponderance of this is in the safe side. If you go down to your community, the very safe intensity drops a little bit. I'm going to be talking on intensity a few times today. So instead of 38%, we're now at 24% very safe, about one in four saying very safe. But the overall stack of safe total doesn't really change a lot, right? The total safe, right about 80%. The somewhat safe and the very unsafe, those changed a little bit in terms of percentages, but not dramatically. Washington County as a whole, we lose a little bit more in the intensity. We're now down to 14% very safe. But really, your eyes are drawn to the last item. We included that intentionally to show you how Washington County is feeling about downtown Portland. We said, what about downtown Portland? The very unsafe at 43%. So this really gives you a strong sense of, yes, not only do people feel safer in their own communities, but it gives you a way to compare how they view downtown Portland very differently. So 77% total unsafe there. Clearly a big difference with the, between how people are feeling in their local community. Let's keep going. We also wanted to get a sense of overall perceptions of, of neighborhood crime. The question here was, thinking about crime in your neighborhood compared to a year ago, would you say it is much or somewhat worse? Much or somewhat better or about the same? And you can see almost two thirds either saying about the same here or in this sort of softer category of somewhat worse, about a quarter there. But the intensity, right? There's almost no intensity here at all. The much worse and the much better are you, 5 and 1%. So very small proportion of people. The vast majority are here in the middle at about the same. We can move on. So the next section here, questions 11 through 19 are also asked on the same scale. The scale here is one to seven. One means that item should be a very low priority and seven means that item should be a very high priority. The idea here is before we ask about the levy itself, we're going to ask about components of the levy before they realize we're going to be asking them about the levy. Again, these are randomized, so no one appears in the same order. We're showing you only the five and above. So if you think about this, the midpoint on the scale would be a four. So anything above a four indicates a high priority. And as I talked about a few minutes ago, intensity is going to matter here. So the first place my eyes go is to the seven percentages, the extremely high priority. And you can see there's one that stands clearly above the rest, reducing child abuse. And again, that's all the information we gave them and they're randomized. So when you see that and reducing child abuse appears first for somebody, eighth for someone else, it really gives you a sense that that one does stand above the rest in terms of importance. That's 60% extremely high priority, total priority at 88%. If you look at the first four items, there's not a ton of separation in terms of the overall total priority, right? You can see they're all in the 80s in some way. But what does change is the intensity. As you move down from item two to four, you can see the, the extremely high priority goes from the 40s to the, to mid 30s, right? And you can see the increasing investigation and prosecution for theft, break-ins, car theft and graffiti. Number two there with the second highest intensity, reducing domestic violence and supporting victims of crime. All four of those, there's that first one, reducing child abuse. The next tier is really the next three. And then I would say the next three is, is the, the, the next three is a grouping. The total priority there into the 70s. But the intensity now, we're getting into the 30s with each of these. Not to say they're, they're certainly less important than the first ones, but if something is important to nearly three quarters of voters, that tells us it does matter a lot, right? These are expanding programs to help youth, expanding more programs to avoid jail time for youth and expanding capacity, especially courts focusing on addiction and mental health challenges. Those three, clearly in a tier by themselves. The last two really don't match the others at all in terms of both intensity or overall. The, the next to last one, expanding programs to help adults avoid jail time, still 62% total priority, but look at where we are extremely high priority now, 27%. So we're about a quarter. And the last one, culture-specific programs, only 50% total priority and 15% extremely high priority. So now you're getting a sense, even before we ask about the levy itself, about the various components of it and how important voters view each of these, each of these items. We can move on. That was a little too fast. I think, yes, I think this is the, the next. It was a little too fast. I think, yes, I think this is the, the next slide. So what we did here is before we asked the levy language itself, we introduced this concept of what I'm, what we're calling a soft levy replacement. And we remind people that there was a voter approved levy in 2020 that funds, public safety in our court system that expires in 26. How likely would you be, likely or unlikely, to support replacing it? The idea behind this is without, we obviously haven't included any actual tax revenue here, right? So we haven't asked them how much it would cost them. We haven't told them any of the details, just to get a sense of their attitudes at this point about, about renewing the levy. And you can see the total support at 72%. We have very likely and somewhat likely to support combined together at 72. The opposition about 28%. I look at this as our ceiling, right? This is the highest number we might see because there is no consequence attached to it. There is no tax raise or discussion at all about what's happening there. So it really gives you just a sentiment of how likely people are to say they would support it. We'll move on to the next slide. So what we do here in the next two questions, we then choose the actual ballot title. This is, this first box is about as close as we think the ballot title will be to what they actually see on the ballot. And we want to do that whenever we can because we want to simulate what's gonna happen to people. Obviously, as you think about the survey, the survey is perfect information and not every voter is gonna walk in with the same pieces of information. But the ballot title itself is one thing that almost everybody shares, right? They will actually see the ballot title. We've highlighted a couple of things here in bold to draw your attention to it. We did test a 65 cent per thousand. And we put the average cost per homeowner in the first year in this actual initial support question. We also then describe in the second one, what's actually happening here. Because the measure is replacing the existing levy, the actual cost increase is about 69 more per year for the first year or about 575 a month. So we do both of these because not everyone's gonna walk in with the same information, but we want to understand how much of a barrier cost is to this, to the renewal support. So knowing these two, we can then look at the initial support question. And I always look at the initial support question on the left as one of our toughest asks in the survey, right? There's another place where we ask about negative information, but this is the first time they've heard it, right? And I want you to note the difference between the generic support at 72% and the actual support when we give them the ballot language itself. So this gives you an indication of, there's a big drop off between the two, between the people who are generally supportive of the idea. When they actually hear the ballot title, the, the support drops. The other thing I'm gonna call out for you is the intensity. If you look at the support number, 27, 20% of that is strongly support, right? That means that 37% are in the, yeah, I think so, right? But they're not fully committed to the idea. In fact, in terms of intensity, there is more intensity in the opposition. 24% strongly opposed, 19% somewhat opposed to get to 57, 43. Not a bad place to start, right? The mid 50s on a measure like this. But when we started at 72, a minute ago in the generic, you really gotta say, all right, there might be some cause for concern here. At the moment, we are in a positive outlook economically. And assuming that continues, I think I feel pretty good about the measures chances, right? And you will see at the end that generally in the county, you've done pretty well when it comes to initial support and then final support at the actual ballot box. But we can't control the economy. None of us can, right? And we all, we don't know necessarily what's coming. That right direction, wrong track number is correlated strongly with support. And as long as that stays strong, we feel pretty good about the chances here. The other part of this that gives me some, a positive outlook on this is when we give people the actual cost information and that it is a renewal. Look what happens to support. We actually see a, a much bigger return in support. And in fact, that intensity I talked about before, the strongest support at 34% and the somewhat at 30%. Now, obviously that means there are 30% there that could be wishy-washy in some way, only somewhat supportive. But the fact that they rebounded that much, we went from 57 to 65, an opposition from 43 to 35 is all positive. So this gives you a sense of the initial replacement measure of support within the subgroups. So this is the first time we've really showed you support group, a subgroup support for the measure. And there's a lot of numbers in this slide, but the thing I want to draw your attention to first is the far right column, which is the net support. We take the total support, total opposition. We are looking for places where the net support is either even or underwater. And there's a couple of places I want to draw your attention to. First, men where we're underwater by one point. So essentially it's dead even. Same with the 18 to 59 category. So this, this sort of reinforces for me that a lower turnout election is a better place to be for this measure. Because you look at the 60 plus percentage support, 29 net support for the 64 to 36 versus the under 60 category, which is where we split it about 50, 50 for age in this kind of election, 51% opposed, 49% support. So this really shows you, there's a really big age gap in terms of these two, these two generations and their support. As you move down to the rest of this, there's a lot of correlation between under 60 and renter and, and renters. That's why you're seeing them underwater. But the one I want to draw your attention to most is the last row, the right direction, wrong track number I talked about. There is a huge and clear split between these two. If you say things are in the right direction, your net support for this measure is 36, is 36 points. If you're in the, if you're said wrong track, 40% opposition, right? That's a huge divide between these two, a much bigger divide than we're seeing in any other demographic subgroup throughout the survey. The other ones you're gonna notice here, the council districts, there's mostly support in two of the council districts and, and essentially dead even. And two of the other council districts and some other subgroup support that is interesting at the moment, but not nearly as definitive as the right direction, wrong track number. Okay. So what we do next is we describe to people components of the public safety levy. We read this information to them or they read it to themselves. And then we're gonna try to figure out what reaction they have to these more detailed components. You remember before when we gave them the importance components, we didn't tie them to the levy. We just essentially said how important these are. It looks like there are a couple of questions that I'm hearing, so I'm gonna see, I don't think I can hear you, but I will look at my text message to see if I can read the question back and answer. Just give me a minute. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my direction from Philip. I think I've seen your green, your green card, which I think means go. So. All right. I will keep going. So I, I think I bought you enough time to read what's on this page, but each of them are a more detailed version of the components we tested before to give people a sense of what's actually contained in here. Once again, this is perfect information. Not everyone is gonna walk into the ballot box knowing everything about this, but it gives you a sense of which of these components are the most intriguing to people. So let's look at the next slide and show you what that looks like as I stack them up. So we're doing this on an important scale, very important, somewhat important, not important and not at all important. Once again, they're all randomized. And so the first place you might go is the total importance, right? You can see over there that once again, child abuse, like you expected from the earlier slide, comes out on top. The very important now is 66%. So intensity matters here a lot because child abuse is standing out amongst, amongst the rest. 92% total importance. So universal importance here. In fact, for most of these, we're looking at about three quarters or better in terms of total importance. The major difference you're seeing is the intensity of the very important, right? So you can see the next three, domestic violence, mental health and the inflation message, which we can go back and look at that if you're interested for the, the full text. Those are all about 50% very important and another, you know, quarter to third that are saying somewhat important. The service range message that we did, almost there, right? It's actually higher in terms of overall importance, but it actually drops in the very important below that. But these are really statistically very similar to each other. The youth message at 41% very important and the addiction message, 37% very important and 35% somewhat. So all of these on this list are showing us there are strong components that people think are important to, to know and have included in the levy. And after that, we're really trying to get a sense of, now that you know all this information, how does your reaction to the levy measure change? Move on to the next slide. You can see the progression here from the initial support at 57%. You remember that a few minutes ago. After the cost information, we went to 65. And then after this additional information, we're up to 71. Now, what you'll notice here is that the strongest support doesn't really change a lot much, right? What really changes here is we're gaining in the somewhat support. So that's not a big change from 65 to 71. It's about five or six points. It's not nothing, right? And we're much closer to that ceiling I talked about. But again, I don't think this is reality because all they've heard so far is cost information and everything positive. They've heard about good things that this measure is gonna purchase, right? They haven't heard anything else. I counter to that other than potential, the cost, cost component, which we saw at the very beginning tended to depress support on the, off that 72% after 57%. So let's look at the next slide. We always want to make sure that we're not walking out of a survey like this with only positive information, right? We want to make sure that we're telling people, giving them a reason to say no. And what we did here is kind of a collected group of negatives. People say that, that tax, taxes are already too high. It's not time to ask for more. We've had historic inflation. Families are struggling to keep up. We should just do better with the money we've already got. And if we make this sort of simple altogether argument, what's the impact? We'll look at the next slide. So as you can see here, we do essentially rebound, we do, we do go back to 65% total support, 35% opposition. It feels very much like what we saw after the cost information. And so, you know, this to me is much more in line with the kinds of things you can expect, right? Now, we've got all the information on the table. They know about the cost. They know what's included in the measure. They have sort of an excuse about inflation, all the rest of us to say, man, maybe I don't want to vote for this. So the, the sort of, I wouldn't call it a dark cloud, but you know, a bit of hesitation there is look at the strongest support. 29% here after the negative message. That's the second lowest in the survey. The lowest we saw it was at the very beginning, the initial support. But that does indicate there are, you know, 36% and that's somewhat support category who are not fully committed to the measure. Now, I think most of them are reserving judgment, right? A lot of people will do this and say, yes, I'm likely to vote for that. And in fact, you'll find that most of those support, those somewhat supporters will in fact vote for a measure at the end of the day. Want to show it to you just to give you a sense of, well, there is this chance that if the right direction, wrong check number and the economy changes, that we are at risk of the measure. I don't think that's gonna happen, but you never quite know. Finally, just as a passing comment, we are doing both the levy renewal for the library and public safety. We did ask about library renewal here. We asked about public safety support after people knew that the library was also on the ballot. It really doesn't change anything at all. 65% total support sticking there for the measure. Next slide. So we went back historically just to show you in blue is every time a poll was conducted, green and or red. And I guess the orange there is when another poll was conducted and then the outcome. So if you start to track this, virtually every time you've asked one of these poll questions, you actually tend to do better at the ballot box than you did in the poll. So, you know, mostly within that margin of error for, for most of them. The, the closest call here would be the 2020, which we know COVID was doing all kinds of stuff at that point. That's the closest where 51 to 55. So we're feeling pretty good about the chances of this measure, but just to give you that historical sense, what's happened in each instance. You've tended to out, to outpoll in the actual ballot box from what the polling showed. So to summarize, and then we can see if we can, if you can text me questions if you have them. So the first thing is the right direction, wrong track number is good and we're happy about that because that means things are going in the right direction. It also tends to correlate with support as you saw for the measure. Homelessness, public safety and housing affordability are the top concerns in that open-ended question. When we asked about public safety, we also saw homelessness, but we saw property crime and unsafe driving come up a little bit higher in terms of overall concerns. Terms of safety in people's neighborhoods, they feel generally pretty good in the neighborhood and their community and believe that crime is stable. But a quarter did say it's gotten worse than the last year, but most people said it's about the same. We saw that voters tend to be supportive of the public levy replacement items, both generically and specifically when they knew it was tied to the measure. And that those priorities are really high for voters, right? Everything that was included in levy, they found to be both, both important and they like the components that we described. The 65% levy appears viable, but as a, as a reminder to you, if, if the environment changes, the economy changes, that tie from red direction, wrong track to measure support is really critical for us to keep in mind. Hopefully things stay good economically and positive and continue to, to improve. But if they don't, I think we really have to consider that. That's one of the reasons why we recommended polling significantly later on in this process to come as close as we can to the actual ballot time for the measure. Those are all the things I want to present to you. If there are questions, you can text it to me and I will, unless I can hear you now. I don't know. We can test. But you can, you can text it as well. I'll be happy to answer them.
That was like when the clerk unmuted and you were still unmuted, Ian, there was a little bit of feedback, but maybe if we both mute, we can see.
Okay, I'll try it.
Hey, Ian and Sierra, can you hear me?
Faintly.
Okay. Well, so I'm gonna go first. Not a question here. First, I want to give compliments to EMC. I know they can't hear this, which is sad. I, my elected career, I've worked with.
Four.
Can you hear me? And EMC has been there at the top. Incredibly nuanced. Giving you the precision of what mattered. So we are very well served. The comment that I was making earlier that I realized you couldn't hear is I was comforted to hear where you're based. Did sound because I had assumed you were in California. And with the California fires, I'm thinking, how in the world are they gonna be able to keep it together if they're under evacuation orders? So that would be a little bit more at these versus worrying about you. Now to the content of the material. Wow. Slides 28 and 29, really incredible, powerful. It's all powerful information. But the historical context and the key findings, great. And I hope you've all internalized that. Before we got into the, the, what I call the variance information or whatnot. I reminded myself that it was important for me to separate discussions that we have with our subject matter experts on what investments will change on the ground results, like the statistics, right? And the utilization of BKMs with criminal justice reform as separate from learning about how we can sell the money measure. So that's why it's important to remember that what we're talking about here is voter viewpoints on value. And how we can sell the local option levy. And I really appreciate how in the future, we'll also be able to use this information to help us on which communities support gap filling in our financial resources as we do future budget years. But this, the point here is really great value information as we move forward in selling a next generation levy. When I was at slide 21, I was scratching my head a little bit. And so I pulled out the survey information for the 2020 levy with fall and December. And we're looking pretty good. Oh, it was for slide 2022. I misspoke. So once again, EMC, just great techniques that you've used here to give us really a wealth of information. So it's at this juncture where I'm, I also want to compliment the Public Safety Steering Committee. And having discussions about what to consider. We can't just overload the levy to do the gap filling that we need for all that would help us improve the public safety system. But we can help our community value that very same public safety and justice system as supported by a next generation local option levy. And it's one reason why I'm comfortable in stepping back from my active role on the public safety levy and having it in good board hands with Commissioner Phi continuing and Commissioner Snyder there as well. I know you'll continue to ask good questions, working with our very extensive steering committee. And bring, bring choices here to us so that we can feel comfortable that the next generation levy referral will in fact continue to have good value in supporting our public safety and justice stack. So it's a little unusual for me to go first, but I thought I wanted to get that context out for me and see what actual questions, all of mine were compliments really, what questions my colleagues have. So, and I'm just gonna use a little pantomime here in case we have audio problems. Which commissioner would like to go first? Okay. So Commissioner Treese is gonna go first. And then when she's done asking a question, I'll raise the green card so that you know you have the mic. Go ahead, Pam.
And I will try to speak loudly and clearly. I have two questions. And if I ask a question that's inappropriate in relationship to campaign versus levy design, let, please let me know. So the first question is on, it's more of a comment on slide 22. When we look at the county commission districts, one through four, I think it's really interesting what the, what the degree of support here is. And I would ask the question, does the support of the ESPD influence the support of this measure when I look at the, the two districts, one and two? I'm surprised, I'm actually kind of surprised that one is as low as it is versus two. And I just, I'm trying to find the reasons why. And I'm thinking about this for future information as well as for current information.
So I can actually hear you pretty well now, or well enough to be able to answer your question. So the thing I would say to you about the districts here, remember there's a margin of error at play, right? And so when we're looking at, at the far left, you can see the percentages that each of the districts gets of the overall survey. They're each around 100 interviews or so. They vary a little bit, right? But when we look at a margin of error at 100 interviews, it's almost 10 points. So what that means is that we could be going either direction. It could be much, obviously the, the numbers we're showing you are the most likely numbers. But I think what you can realistically say is that yes, support is lower in one and four and higher in two and three. Now, is it, is it, is it such a big gap between all four of those? Maybe not. That's certainly possible. I don't think we have enough insight because of that margin of error driving here to really walk away from the saying, you know, I know for sure what's happening in each, each of those four districts.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps. The next question is.
Can I stay with that? Because I have the same question on too. So can we stay with that just for a second? Because I'm District Four, and obviously the lowest of the strongly support. So I'm, I, and most District Four is hugely rural. So is there, I guess I'm intrigued as to why that would be lower. District Four is generally more conservative. And so I would expect those numbers to be higher for public safety. Do you have any more thought to that?
Generally, when we think about correlation here, the first thing is that as District Four has the smallest sample size, it's 88 interviews. So our margin of error is even higher, right? We're, we're at least 10 points or more. But you know, conservative doesn't always necessarily correlate to support or tax measures. So I think that's part of what you're seeing here is that if you were to look at the tax measure question here throughout the survey, you know, remember this was also our toughest ask, that initial support question. So if we start to pull aside the subgroups, and as I'm talking here, I'm hoping that Siana will be able to grab from me District Four at another point in the survey. I don't want us to make too much of each of these subgroups because again, with a 10-point margin of error, we might be, we might actually be like 55% support initially here in the district. But District Four, at some point, maybe Siana, we could go with the other one that we felt was, was a good one after the post-negative question? Because if we look at it there, you'll get a chance to see the full set of information for District Four and then see how they react at the end after the negative. Let's, let's have I bought Siana enough time to do that?
Yes, yes. Support is 59% after the negative information.
Okay. So, so there you go. So that shows you that just like the rest of the survey, there, there is a lot of movement within each of the sub-districts of the region. At 59% support, that should make you feel a lot better, right? That's pretty much in line with what the other districts were at some point in the survey. So it's not as if District Four is completely gone, but certainly at the beginning, and I would, I would totally believe this, that when I'm asking a district that has gone through, we've gone through with inflation and taxes and everything else, to support a tax and they're not really sure what it means yet, we haven't told them at this point in the survey, that it's a renewal or anything else like that. Another tax, I'm not sure I can afford it, right? That's probably a lot of what's going on here in this question.
Yeah, I thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Pam, for letting me step in just for a second. So I guess where I was going with that is I have six cities in District Four. Five of them are small cities. I regularly, probably three times a year, communicate with their mayors and councils. I need to probably amp up the messaging for this is what I, where I was going with this, I guess. Do I need to do a better job marketing this as I travel around my district? And also, I'm very competitive. I do not like District Two winning.
You also have three cities that have their own public safety local, local option levy. Yeah.
That's true.
You can never do enough selling.
Yes, that's right. And, and you know, this is something that I think a lot of, a lot of elected boards don't always understand, right? This isn't always a set it and walk away and forget it. Your role as public servants here also comes in to the degree that you can do it both outside of this room, right? On your own personal time, however you, however you need to do that. Certainly being cheerleaders for this and organizing people and helping them understand what's in here, communicate about it, is definitely something you can do and should do. And the more that that happens, the more cohesion there is, the more there is, we're all reading the same playbook and why this is positive for the county, the better it is that everyone in the county hears that.
Thank you.
So Pam, you said you had two questions. We've covered one. No, that's, no, it's okay.
No, that's, I think you enhanced the question and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your recognition of District Two. Interesting. The, I'd like to go to slide 28. And this is actually, I believe, a continuation of your question, Commissioner Willie, and that is, do we have information about what, what the slide presents to me is, what was the polling and what was the result? Okay. Yep. So what I'd like to know is what efforts went into the, the, the work behind the campaign in these various years? And this may be stepping in.
I have, I have information offline that I can share on that. But we also have the voters pamphlet, and there was a mailer campaign.
Okay. I just think that as we look forward, this is, I want that in.
Yes, I understand. I will, I've brought that file in, and I thought I would go over it with Commissioner Snyder, and then he can carry it with moving forward in extracurricular activity.
What would be on topic though, would be what the county factual, objective, educational stuff was done in that space, which is distinctly separate from campaign and persuasive activity.
Yes.
I could answer a little bit of that just quickly. Ian made a very important point early on in his presentation about the limited words that we very carefully choose to actually describe the measure in accordance with the Oregon law in the ballot title and explanatory statement. And in each of these elections that are shown here, we paid very, very close attention to the, the kind of work that EMC has helped us with, to be instructive as to what word choice we're making, not, I mean, the, the, the intent throughout every one of these, and this, this latest one included has been to be truthful, to be honest, to be forward, you know, you know, leaning in terms of what, what the, what the voters need to know, what they want to know. And, and, and we feel like we were not doing our duty if we didn't highlight, hey, this is something important according to you voters in our research. So let's make sure to describe that carefully in the ballot material, nevertheless being factual, neutral and so forth. So that's a number one mission for staff. We want to bring to your board a viable, accurate, honest, legally compliant, suggested ballot title and explanatory statement way up front. And then, and then there's all kinds of neutral activity that we can do as a county government. And then there's advocacy that you all can do as elected officials that ensues. But I just wanted to make that point because Ian made it at the very beginning, and, and it's really an important one.
So there is a little second part to the second question. And that is, while I understand that the 2020 poll and the 2020 results were in that, were in that COVID experience, I'm concerned that that may not be the only factor. And that's the most recent poll results that we have in relationship to public safety. And the others had a spread that seems, that is wider. The 2006 is probably the most narrow in relationship. But nonetheless, I just want to understand as much as I can about the, the previous polling and results.
I don't know if I'm invited to answer that one, but to me, the biggest difference today is the lingering effect of inflation. I think that that, we have been through a, as you all know, a, a historical high inflation. We hasn't been this way for 40-plus years. I think that has a lot to do with what you see in the initial response to this question. I think it has colored a lot of what's happened politically in the last six months. One of my big wonderings is what does the economy look like for this year? What do, if tariffs are a thing, what does that do to economic outlook on a trade dependent state, as an example, right? And a trade dependent region? Those are big question marks for me, coming out of this inflationary period. And it's, it's, the challenge is, if, and if, if we knew this answer, we would all be investing the right way in the stock market, we'd, and we'd know what to do, right? But we don't. And that's, that's the challenge here, is that, that's what's different between '24 and all the rest of these. Yes, COVID introduced all kinds of uncertainty and the same kind of economic concerns, but that was more about, am I going to have a job tomorrow? Right? Can I leave my house? As opposed to, I know and can see the evidence every time I walk into the grocery store or anything else that I'm paying. So I think that's the big difference here.
I'd like to add a comment that in addition to seeing the ESPD levy, we also have the brand new THPRD levy, which occurred last year as well, while inflation was very much on people's minds and their pocketbooks. And that levy did not have an outside advocacy campaign. Instead, it was all done with the factual agency positioning. So I just wanted to add that for flavor. Yes, we are all going to, none of us can control what the economy's going to be like for the, the macro environment for the remainder of the year. But I think our roadmap for better informing ourselves is there. And also, what's very telling is the degree, for me, is the degree to which our community is telling us, we value our public safety and justice system. And we need to keep investing in it.
What was the approximate margin in the THPRD?
You can look at that on the voter election results. I don't know it off the top of my head.
I was just wondering if it's close, far, whatever.
No, it did, it did surprisingly well.
Okay.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Good to know.
Next questioner. Thank you, Commissioner Trese. Do you want to go back to you, Jerry?
No, I guess my takeaway on slide 17 for public safety priorities, I think that's a message to us. And I'd be interested to hear what the sheriff's department response would be. Who, I guess, which of these areas are we prioritizing? I mean, how do we, how do we do this? I, I have to admit that reducing child abuse is number one by, by a margin, surprised me. So what are we doing in the public safety environment to enhance that? And how do we, how do we do, do we communicate that in our levy campaign?
Well, remember, they're selling versus investing. And also, the sheriff's office isn't the only aspect, only department contributing to public safety and justice and what is done with regard to each of these things. So, but that is really what will help commissioners. What it, it leads me to say is between now and our referral for our steering committee members and staff, what will help commissioners is to better, to have that reminder of what the public safety and justice stack is, and how with the combination of our general fund and the supportive local option levy, how we're able to ensure that we have a strong system for our community.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That will help us in our role, continuing to market that one of the big services that we provide as a county government is public safety and justice countywide. People don't necessarily experience it, obviously, each and every day. Okay, so we have three, two more commissioners. Who wants to go first, Phi or Snyder?
I, I don't have any comment. Thank you. This was a great presentation.
Just very quickly, this is probably the, I would say in my elected time, the 10th sitting through of this type of content and presentation related to a pre, pre levy or tax ask. And I've been underwhelmed all those times pretty much until now. I don't have a lot of questions because of how robust and thoroughly prepared this was. Others have commented on that. I won't belabor it other than to say it's impressive and helpful, and I appreciate it. I do have similar questions about the child abuse component of what the polling information is, is telling us here. It does occur to me, as I think about it, that that is definitely viewed as a very vulnerable population that can't advocate for itself. And so I think that certainly plays a part in why adults that are taking these polls feel that way around the power dynamic and powerless people in our community who are being taken advantage of. So I'm, I suspect that's probably a component of that. But I, I have a lot of curiosity about not only the result, but what that may mean we want to do when even deciding what investments are being made in, in this process, or what we want to prioritize from the, the spending or the, the plans to make investments. So that's an impact there. I do, I would be remiss, since everyone's talking about their districts. I would just like to point out that District Three had the highest strongly support. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, commissioners. I really appreciate it. I, I want to share one other comment. If we could go to slide 29. Back when we were doing the May 2020 public safety and justice levy, I was on not the leading edge, but the bleeding edge in terms of advocating that homelessness was a public safety issue. So I feel vindicated.
You're right.
I'll say that. But I'm also very extremely proud of how all of our departments and the Washington County team has worked with our local city teams and our community-based organizations to improve our systems and to collaborate like nobody's. So extremely proud of the greater Team Washington County. So, and last comment, oh, I meant to, to do this one first. I really appreciate the work that the steering committee went through with EMC. Over our last two meetings, we really had to say, okay, we would like to be able to do more investment in the public safety and justice stack, but we realized there's a limit to that. So how do we balance that? And came to, well, we're going to have to look at, how do we possibly, for our own thinking, look at having increases for a scale of just two of a possible five scaled investment levels, not for selling, but rather for helping to, to steer us in terms of how do we have an investment level that will serve our community for the next six years, right? Because we have this year, even though the levy doesn't apply for all. Cause we have this year, even though the levy doesn't apply for all six years, timeframe is out to six years. And I am feeling very fortunate that we chose a level that we felt a little bit was pushing the edge of the envelope and our community said, we support that because of the value of public safety and justice here in Washington County. So that's, that's a bit of comfort, comfort. We do still have work to do, uh, with regard to communicating to, uh, our community and all of the steps necessary for a referral. But I feel like we've got a great team and a great partner with EMC. So thank you very much, uh, Philip, for doing all the RFP work and working with great firms for us. Uh, and all of the collaboration that the Public Safety Steering Committee is doing. Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you, guys. Good work.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so, um, let's take our 15-minute break and we will reconvene at 10:45.
They didn't let him go get signatures, so they threatened him.
Well, they threatened us. I just did this, I did a search on your, on that number three already played programs and it's a spam. They, they, they say that.
Greetings from the auditorium. Can you hear me in the workroom?
You've blocked the number?
I've blocked it twice.
Okay, it says, this is, it's possible for callers using common tactics to hide their identity. So I would, I would continue to block it. And I don't know that there's anything else you can do.
What's, but what's their purpose?
You know how to, you know, you know, to do this or this.
Yeah.
Empty it, there's also, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's air relief, I was supposed to be letting air out, but not, not do it out.
All right, welcome back commissioners and back to you Chair Hinton.
Great, thank you. Welcome back from the break, everyone. The next item on our agenda is board and leadership communication. Uh, why don't we start with a letter of support, uh, for posed for Washington County to support the West Side Trail, U S Highway 26 overcrossing project grant proposal. We each had the opportunity to see this draft letter in the packet. Uh, do commissioners have any questions or, uh, requests for changing the letter before we consider approving it? Everybody, okay, we're all thumbs up, great. Thank you, staff, for a high-quality letter. Um, before the next thing, uh, we talked about our committee assignments at roundtable on Thursday. So I took all of my notes and asked, uh, Clerk Moss and Grace to verify, uh, that my note-taking was correct. And so I updated the chart. It's two-sided for our different committee assignments as well as constructed by Commissioner V. So we have that. At the March Roundtable, uh, I still need to clear with Ms. Angie doing a scrub on boards and commissions and, uh, looking at which other Washington County boards and commissions have these non-voting board seats. And the purpose of that, is it by ORS or just by choice? Because I know from our rolling agenda and our 2025 focus list that we are spread very thin. So, um, think about that because we have also given ourself the task to have some special meetings in this first half of the year. Uh, okay, so now we'll go to board communication. Uh, I'll make it easy. I don't have anything else. We had the AOC meetings, uh, kicking off for the year. Nothing vital or earth-shattering to report. Uh, and that, the only change really to note is the Board of Directors is now meeting quarterly. Uh, the new president decided that to try that technique to see if it increases, uh, attendance as well as contribution. So we'll give it a whirl. And, uh, he made a point of making sure we know as board members that the Board of Directors Retreat, Annual Retreat will be in June. Uh, this year it will be once again held over at the Sun River Conference Center. Uh, but all commissioners are welcome to attend. So, um, anything else I would have to say would be on item six. So that's it from me. Who wants to go first of the four of you?
I, I can follow because mine is quick as well. Um, lots of activities, lots of committee meetings, but nothing, uh, to raise to the board's levels awareness. Um, I will make a note yesterday there was a WCCC meeting. Um, and the only change is there's a new co-chair and vice chair of WCCC. And, uh, Tim Rosner stepping into that role in, um, Beach Base, um, as a vice chair. I met a lot of new ma- uh, new mayors in Washington County that were elected. And we did it in person and it was three hours, uh, very well attended. Uh, staff did a really good job, um, of convening us in person. And I think we're going to resume back to virtual after yesterday.
I will also note that the, um, the transportation the transportation funding sustainability topic did not even come up in the monthly chair-mayor meeting. I wanted to make sure I reported on that. Okay, who's next?
All right, I can go. Pretty brief. I have had lots of briefings, both on timely topics and also on onboarding, you know, like emergency management, things like that, just to keep everybody up to date, probably four or five since our meeting last Thursday. I've submitted my power mapping. I know I was a little behind on that probably from where all of you were. Because I came into the fold a little late, but I got that done and submitted. And then just a reminder, I'll be at County College from Thursday night through Saturday.
Hey, just a quick follow-up. We had the ERMDEC meeting last week and the PAB meeting, I did announce at the PAB meeting that we were doing a switch. You were going to become the primary person and I was the alternate. We need to just sync up calendars to see if you have the capability. And I know Grace and Maida are on that right now for the, for this first applicant. So I can help out is what I'm saying there, if it doesn't work out. Yesterday I attended the WashCo Hallers Association meeting and told them that I was going to be sitting on ARWAC as well. So I got feedback from them about what key issues are. It's always a good meeting to attend. The last Friday, I attended the, my first PDx Metro Workforce Meeting that's convened by WSI. So I sat in there and it was very interesting. So I'm looking forward to bringing back more, more pertinent information about what types of trainings are going on. It was held at the PCC Opportunity Center that's out on Northeast Killingsworth. Then this, obviously, oh no, last night, the CPO one and seven held a joint meeting. It was actually a resource fair. And it was really well-attended. There were a lot of community folks there and a lot of people from Washington County from our garbage and recycling group with their kind of standard, you know, spin the, spin the wheel piece. And also our emergency management was there, safety, TVFNR. The Twalton Valley, Twalton Conservation Group was there, ERMED was there. The OSU Extension was there. I'm kind of going around the room, but it was, there were a lot of presenters and there were a lot of community members there. So OEICE had a table there. Bethany wrote, Sarah Beechy's sitting in on the Bethany.
North Bethany Service District for Roads.
Thank you very much Catherine.
Acronym soup sometime.
Yeah, they were all there, but most importantly, it was really a good group of people. Clean Water Services came. We've got some continuing issues on the Pioneer Street piece and we're trying to unravel all of that and what it means. You've seen community comment on that in your, in our, in our reports. So I'm just letting you know that there was a good team of people there. We're working on that. You're mentioning CWS reminded me, your district was the one impacted by the beetle infestation? Oh, the maple? What do they call it? The containment? Yeah. Is that still ongoing or has that been ended?
It's still ongoing, yeah.
And, but it, the infestation has not spread. The containment has worked. That's kind of what, what I wanted to make sure we talked about. Particularly as North Bethany has grown with new homeowners, I want to make sure that the new homeowners have the opportunity to be exposed to that. It's a good thing for the CWS newsletter and also to come to a CP, another CPO meeting in the future. This week, we've got the House District Appointment tomorrow night and I have an RDPO meeting on Friday. That is looking at the strategic plan. Thought maybe as I was looking at that, you'd like to take a look and I can send it out to everybody else.
Which strategic plan?
For RDPO. Oh, okay. On HD34, before we move to, before we go to public comment, I'll be running that meeting. I will be asking, and I'll start, for all the commissioners to report any meetings with candidates or related to the appointment or any contacts, whether it be phone calls or meetings that are not reflected in the public comment packet that we've gotten. Since, then the time period of note is from Sunday evening after the appointment recommendation meeting for this position to the Wednesday night meeting. Okay? And I'm, yes, I think that that's a good idea.
So we're each going to report details of all that. So it tracks.
I'm going to be encouraging each of each commissioner, and some may not have had any contact.
Right.
But, so be on the lookout if you had any phone calls or meetings, if you had any emails, they should have gotten into that packet. But if you had any phone calls or meetings with anyone on this appointment from Sunday evening, the fifth through Wednesday, early evening, the fifteenth. To please report it. And not just with the potential candidates or with candidates, with anybody else as well. Correct. With anybody else?
Anybody meaning?
Relative to the HD, so, let me back up. Tomorrow evening, Wednesday, the fifteenth, we're having a joint meeting with the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners for the HD34 appointment. So all of this is on the HD34 appointment. If you had any phone calls or meetings with anyone between Sunday evening, January fifth and the time of the meeting, January fifteenth, I would recommend you disclose that.
How would you like us to disclose that?
We'll be doing that verbally in the meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay, because I've met with all three of them.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah.
If it was between that time period?
It was.
Yes.
I was just talking to this morning with Board Clerk Kevin Moss around how do you want to get emails in my inbox? So this is very timely conversation. So we are on, on the right path, Kevin. Go get it.
So there was a deadline for people to submit written support of noon yesterday. Anything after that timeframe will go into the constituent report this Friday. If any of that content that you may have reviewed since that meeting, Sunday, the fifth through this meeting, if it has influenced your thinking, I suggest you disclose it. Okay, everybody clear? Okay. All righty, so Commissioner Willie, you're the last one.
Yeah, so I'll start with tonight and go backwards. I have Salmonberry Trail Foundation Board Meeting tonight at six. And we'll certainly get some updates on the activity that we've been anticipating and certainly enjoying. And we've got another outreach, I think, in Portland tomorrow night, but I'm not going to be going to that. But, so anyway, still active with that. I've had a number of conversations and meetings about the Yellow House, which is the house here in Hillsborough on Sixth. And so those have been.
Project Homeless Connect.
Yes, well, with PHC, with a couple of their board members and then with staff.
Well, the Yellow House is the public, Project Homeless Connect.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to say who you met with. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine. But that's been very good. Everybody is really working in, I guess, coordination. So it's, it's good.
Great.
Attended last week's Hillsborough squaring in of the new mayor and three city councillors. So that was a fun event. Attended the Washington County Legislative Meeting. And there was about a half a dozen or so legislators that were there. The topics in the panel was transportation, housing, and industrial land. So that was a good meeting. Been working with, certainly with staff and Pam on the library levy. Interesting regional stakeholders meeting I listened to last Friday that Chair attended as well as several other people. Lots of conversation there. We'll see if anyone was paying attention from the Metro Council because the entire Metro Council was there. And as was noted, it was not officially noticed, but we'll, we'll see where that goes.
They believe that they did notice the meeting. They just did it differently and in a very non-obvious manner compared to all other meetings where the Metro Council is in full attendance.
Did anybody find the agenda for that meeting?
They did not post it in advance. They believe they didn't need to.
Okay, Courtney put on your to-do list to go school Metro Councillors on how to notice public meetings. And then lastly, I attended, not intentionally, but I took my wife to the Twalton City Council Meeting. She was reporting about the Family Justice Center and their results for the past years they've been doing with all of the cities. And just so happened that right behind her presentation was another SHS presentation by Metro Council President Peterson. And so I actually spoke for a couple of minutes before that at the request of the mayor about what, you know, what some of the frustrations and things that we've been experiencing. Some of the things that President Peterson said though during the course of the meeting, the council, the Metro Council, or the Twalton City Council was very engaged, asked very hard questions. Some of which I didn't think were answered very either clearly or very accurately, but I'll hold off on that. But one of the things that was emphasized was that the counties have not been presenting their data to these committees that are set up. And I'm thinking, we put out a quarterly report, we just put out an annual report. And yet the information that was communicated by President Peterson was that the counties aren't reporting, so therefore we don't know how to.
Different data. They have been looking, they have been looking for all of the access to who is being served. We, the counties, know that we have to deal with things like HIPAA. We have to make sure that data is input by a whole variety of people working at community-based organizations through the county teams. And Metro wants access to every single, well, wants access to that information. So it's taken a while and you know that while we all use HMIS as the tool, there are three different databases. Okay, so the teams have been working to try and make sure that across the counties that there is enough transparency so that if an individual in one county is seeking services in another county, there's that access. So that's a level of regionalization. Metro has been asking for full access for the data, but there were very important factors and arrangements that have needed to be worked through. I check-pointed with Molly after the meeting on Friday. They've made great progress in that effort, but Metro continues to tell the story that they've been asking for four years and still don't have it, which is a little out of bounds by professional experience. But I have asked staff to give us an update on that. I don't know if we'll get the update for this afternoon's work session or next Tuesday's work session.
Yeah, and just to follow with that.
Because I pushed back at the Oversight Committee on this and got blasted again by the Metro Council Representative. But the, for me, the important point is the three counties and Metro have been, staff has been working through this. We haven't necessarily been, we haven't been informed by our staff on the progress and any remaining issues. But Metro Council continues to tell a story.
Well, and the story is, that's why they have to change the governance aspect of this because the counties have not been sharing the data. And so it was, it was definitely a spin, I think, on what's going on and justification for their position. I was impressed with the Twalton City Councillors. They were prepared, ask hard questions, different questions that I've heard. And they did a good job. So I, and I, I don't think the information was very clearly communicated. So, yeah, stay tuned. So that's all I got. Thanks.
And I didn't play any role whatsoever in priming them or the conversation for the record.
I thought I, they'd had conversations. It was obvious they had had conversations. Actually, the presentation and everything, I left after forty-five minutes because it was eight-thirty and I was ready to get home. They were still going, so I don't know how long they lasted. And they hadn't even got into their agenda.
Just so I'm clear, the data tension is primarily around individual-level data. Like, I just want to make sure I.
It's called a data-sharing agreement.
Yep.
Okay, it's different than all of the reporting. I mean, we've been required to provide copious amounts of reporting. So, but their chief concern is around this data-sharing agreement. And these three colleagues have had the chance to hear me say this before. But the IGAs have allowed us to have working conversations at the elected level. And that tool has not been used once on this very complex aspect of the program. And that is a choice that other elected officials have made.
There was no mention either of IGAs with the counties.
No, but they are assuming that we will gleefully renegotiate the IGAs after, in my opinion, as one of the partners, been kicked in the teeth over and over and over again.
Yep. Stay tuned.
Yep. Okay, we'll move on now to leadership communication. And why don't we start with CWS? And I would start with a request first. I learned from the monthly Chair Mayor's Meeting yesterday that not all mayors, new mayors especially, have received the invitation to the two Clean Water Essentials, Clean Water Services Essential Programs. So Diane, if you could have Joe redouble his efforts and Grace will email him the latest contact information.
Thank you.
So what have you got?
Thank you Chair Hinton and good morning, CWS Board of Directors. We don't have any updates other than we're focusing on budget. The team is out responding to a sanitary sewer overflow right now related to an air relief valve. So the team is not really good at their emergency response. Thank you.
One of the things of this board received an email with regard to a staff update from your direct staff. But unlike with Ms. Angie's staff changes, I don't recall it telling us what happens in the interim and then forward next step. So I think at, at a minimum, we need to get an update on that no later than our learning day in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, Board of Commissioners. I will say it is the twenty twenty five is moving very quickly. It's only Tuesday and I woke up this morning not realizing what day it was. So maybe that speaks to how my Monday was.
I did that too. I kept thinking it was Monday morning this morning.
So first, last week came and went and I forgot to actually highlight and celebrate that Washington County has fully obligated its ARPA funds as of December thirty first. So I really want to commend the board's leadership in your ARPA framework, the challenging conversations we had with the many needs with this one time funding. There are other jurisdictions that are still kind of struggling in this space. I have learned on February fifth, I will be doing a virtual forum with other county administrators talking about this obligation period that we're working through. I also want to highlight the many staff that are were involved in this, being meticulous on contracts, the timing, making sure that we're following treasury guidelines. Just very, very impressive. I, I want to take an opportunity, I'm going to further the celebration that is somewhat bittersweet to Amanda Garcia Snell has accepted a position with the city of Portland in their city administrator's office. This is a first time ever, the inaugural engagement officer for the city of Portland. It's a huge career advancement for Amanda. So I want to just, I think, in the public sector, when individuals move on to other public service position, it's a time to celebrate. And so I do want to take the opportunity to celebrate Amanda. There are moments in your career that you come across public service individuals that you know what their contributions are going to be when they leave. And Amanda is such a quiet and humble leader that when she leaves this organization, we will see the vast contributions that she has made. So I just want to celebrate her in this career staff.
Yay, Amanda, we're proud of you.
As with, especially during this budget time, as with any staff transition, directors are really looking at the structure of departments or divisions. So Alicia Sorringer, our Equity Officer, is working with Ann Ober and I on looking at the structure of the Equity Office with this transition. And we'll be following up with your board, the timing of the recruitment for our Equity Manager. Schedule, starting on Wednesday, I will be traveling to Arizona for ICMA. I will be on, for me, not early, but for some, maybe earlier flights in the morning. And then available and working online the afternoon of Wednesday. And then really consumed Thursday, Friday and Saturday, and Executive Director interviews. During this time, Marnie Kyle will be acting. County Administrator and Ann Ober will be acting at your board roundtable on Thursday. I will send this information to you in email. As I do with these updates, I just want to underscore again that ICMA or I pay all the travel and food expenses for this travel. Washington County does not pay any of those costs. And that concludes my update.
Terrific, thank you, County Council.
Good morning, still officially morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I thank you, Tanya, for what you said, Ms. Angie, what you said about Amanda. I agree wholeheartedly. I don't think I've quite got, I haven't fully processed losing her partnerships quite yet as graciously, but I'm working on it.
Well said, well said.
Yeah, I'm step two, I guess. And I am very excited for the city and for Amanda. She's been an awesome colleague and I've learned a lot from her. So as, as you see in our communicate, our weekly communication with you, we are very busy in the Office of County Council, working a number of litigation cases to which the county is an actual litigator and also monitoring and working a number of litigation cases or matters that we're not actually a party, a direct party in, but do impact and may impact county operations. So we're staying really busy. I'm finding, I'm learning a lot and seeing just how busy we are and all the things we are touching for Washington County. But also as we are starting this new year, it is a time when we do get a chance to get out and do some train, quite a bit of trainings. And I had the opportunity last week to be with ERMDEC and do annual public meetings and government ethics training for that board. And I was really, really impressed with the questions and their engagement with me. This, I think, may be the fourth time and I'm always trying to keep it a little bit new so that the people who are pros are getting a little bit new information. But this, they were really, really thoughtful and engaged in the training. So I was very impressed. So these are really great community volunteers we have serving Washington County. I also know Rob Bovette recently did some training with the Planning Commission in the same realm. So always a good opportunity. I also wanted to highlight that Ms. Stewart from our office had the opportunity to do some training at the Lewis and Clark Trial College. So that's where we mentor, an opportunity for the bar to mentor new litigators, new lawyers entering the practice. And so we appreciate the opportunities we get to go out to the community and show our expertise and hone our skills. So thank you for those opportunities. That's it for me.
Great, thank you. Well, we are forty five minutes ahead of schedule.
So Chair, we've been trying to do some juggling. If we could just take a five minute break so the rest of our members are here and we can move up the executive session, if you would like, and take care of that now.
I think that would be awesome. So to facilitate that, we are going to take a five minute break and reconvene at eleven twenty three. And when we do so, we'll do so in executive session. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero sub two, sub F and sub H for the purposes of discussing exempt records and potential litigation.
Oh, moved.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Okay, thank you.